Uh, pass muster, so to speak.
I haven't checked references, but I'm familiar with their work from my previous experience, and I don't have any issues with them.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
That passes?
That is in my report, Mayor.
Finance Administration, Alderman Winger?
No report.
Other business, Alderman Coles?
Uh, I would like to make a motion of consideration. As a councilman on a prevailing side, I hereby move and consider a motion to participate with Addison Township in the resurfacing of Oak Meadows Drive. And that was voted on at September 3rd, 2009, City Council meeting.
I'll take that as a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Wesley?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Will this gentleman that's from Addison Township be able to answer the questions, or will that not be appropriate?
At the point that the motion goes back on the floor, it would be appropriate to have Mr. Caskey give us any additional information that he may have brought with us. But it is not on the floor until the motion to reconsider is successful. Let me clarify, a motion to reconsider only brings it back up. It does not approve the, uh, the contract itself, or the participation itself. This is just to bring it back up for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post?
Propose.
Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
We are voting in the positive to confirm to bring it back up.
That's correct.
I vote yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Caddala?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
That passes? The original motion is now back on the floor, which will need to be amended, which is a motion by Alderman Wesley and second by Alderman Shawkey to participate in the resurfacing of Oak Meadows Drive.
I did not make that motion to...
I'm reading from the minutes.
Oh, I, that's right, I hit the positive, yes. But now, is it appropriate to ask the questions, Mayor?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I would suggest, because the original motion did not have a dollar amount, nor did it say who you were going to be participating with, I think it, uh, it would be appropriate to amend the motion that's on the floor. When, on reconsideration, you bring that motion back on the floor, but in order to get it for a full discussion, uh, if the mover, Alderman, uh, E. Wesley and the second are Alderman Shawkey concur, the motion should read, "To participate," uh, "Motion, uh, to participate in the resurfacing of Oak Meadows Drive with the Addison Township for a price not to exceed eighty-seven thousand dollars."
Well, I'm not going to bring it back on the floor. I mean, I, I don't have to...
It's back on the floor already.
Right, but I don't have to make a motion to participate now. Because I don't want, I already voted no for the first round.
But in order to vote the matter down, it needs, it should be properly on the floor with the, with the dollar amount. So if you want to have a discussion on that, it would be appropriate to amend your original motion. You can vote against it, but to amend your original motion, which is on the table now, or on the floor now.
All right, what's the dollar amount?
Eighty-seven thousand, not to exceed eighty-seven thousand.
Not to exceed eighty-seven thousand dollars with Addison Township.
Should you agree to the amendment?
Yeah.
Alderman Shawkey, do you concur?
Oh, yes.
All right, that motion now on the floor is by Alderman Wesley, second by Alderman Shawkey, to participate in the resurfacing of Oak Meadows Drive with Addison Township at a cost not to exceed eighty-seven thousand. Mr. Caskey, you want to go to the podium or the table?
Okay, I guess if you have any questions?
Uh, Alderman Police?
Uh, Mr. Caskey?
Yes.
I don't know if you're the one. Just out of curiosity, when was the city informed of this project that we were going to participate? Because we just heard about it about a month ago.
Well, yes, early in the spring, we were talking about doing it, and I called the Village of Wooddale, and we weren't sure if we were going to do it or not because of the numbers, because we, we were doing a subdivision close to Third Avenue, which is Oakdale Woods. And if we got good numbers in, then we were going to decide to go and do our section, and then I would notify the Village of Wooddale and let them know what the prices would be, and if they want, would want to participate in it. But if we were getting good prices, we were going to do ours no matter what, because the road was deteriorating the last two winters enormously.
My question is, do you know when somebody in Wooddale was contacted and who, who it was?
Early spring, I had talked to, uh, originally John, and then they gave me Dave. And I told Dave I would get ahold of him when I got ahold of the numbers. But nothing was definite until I got ahold of the numbers. So if it was anybody's fault, it was mine, because we didn't know if we were going to be able to do our section until we got our numbers in, and I just notified Dave that, and he told me, "Well, when you guys get your numbers, just notify me, and I'll see what I can do with the Village of Wooddale." And I also notified the Village of Addison on the same thing, and they said the same thing. "Let us know what happens when you guys get your numbers," because they have the eastern section of Oak Meadows Drive.
I'll go first.
Alderman Wesley?
I have several questions, Mayor. Is Addison taking part in it?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
And how much is their, their portion, and how much footage are they going with?
If you go back to the, uh, back section, there's Oak Meadow Drive Center section, which belongs to you guys?
Last page.
There's Oak Meadows East section, and that belongs to the Village of Addison. And if you notice, the numbers have actually gone down since the actual field engineers have been out there.
Okay.
And their number went down from forty-six to forty. And if you notice, yours, yours is around seventy now.
Okay. Here's, Mayor, let me, uh, finish up here, and I'm going to wrap this thing up. First of all, I cannot sit here and support this from the beginning. Two th- two thousand and seven, we did a street study on that block, on that street. On Third Avenue, all the way down, city limits, Woodside, all the way up to Edgewood and all that. That street holds at eighty-two to eighty-one percent. Okay? We go further in Third Avenue here, it's holding about eighty-four, eighty-five percent. According to our table contents, that street should be good for another ten to twelve years. My whole concern about this is an incident happened in this town before, that we did a partnership with Addison Township behind Hawthorne, behind the firehouse, and we did not, um, we ended up paying that bill, because there was something being done. The other thing that kind of concerned me about this whole project is, I cannot believe that Addison Township could even consider not having this prepared for their budget on a, at least a year out, that what streets may be completed, okay? We change our streets when our budget comes, if we don't have the money. I cannot believe that Addison Township could not have a budget on what streets they possibly may do. The other thing, we are doing a joint project with, are we doing a joint project with Deer Path with Addison Township? Mr. Graff? Have we approached them on that project?
Uh, we have not. Deer Path is still a couple of years out, and since we approved the CIP, uh, Capital Improvement Program year by year, we probably wouldn't contact anyone till it'd been approved for that year.
Okay, I'm just saying, here, here's the thing. It's three hundred and some yards we're going to do. According to our street study, we have streets that are below eighty percent in our own town. In our own town, that should be redone before we take part in partnership. I cannot support this in any shape or form, because I'm looking at our street study, we got streets that is our town, that's below the rating of our street study. So, and not to notify us ahead of time, you know, we, we approached you guys to take partner in, uh, help us out with a salt dome, okay, with salt. We got told no. You know, i- i- you're talking about taxing bodies working together, I don't see it on, on your side with us. So that's why I will definitely vote no for this, because the problem is, I could do a, a street that's three hundred and twenty-five yards in our street study for that money in our town.
Did you want to respond?
Yeah. Uh, Eugene, you don't understand, you don't understand, we plow that street, we maintain those shoulders, we're the ones that get to complain. There you call us, because they see our trucks plowing those.
I will guarantee you, our public works guy half the time beats your guys to that street, and he can testify to that.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, Alderman Caddala?
I just want to remind this council, the same council that not that long ago turned down this request to, uh, to, to do this project, that, yeah, this, this small section of street, or large section, however you want to look at it, is in the city of Wooddale city limits. But, uh, we've got other streets that, uh, that were on the streets efficiency study that ranked the same or, or lower. Hell, four of them in, in war, too, Harvey Forest View, Edge Brook, and Oakwood, and, and at least two of those streets just in the last month got a, uh, got a temporary patching to try to hold them over, and, and they ranked the same as this section. So, um, that, you know, we, we've got other streets in town that needed as bad, worse. Uh, and I'd also, uh, you know, like to, uh, to remind everybody that, uh, we've got a lot of residents expecting some action from us on, on flooding issues. And, um, I think we need to use every, every dollar that we find extra in a budget to, uh, you know, to put towards, uh, that bigger problem than, than this is. Um, you know, one of the arguments that was brought up the last time this was under discussion was, well, another, another street came in, I think it was School Street, came in under budget, so we've got the money to do this, and it's still on our street budget. But, uh, to that, I say that money should then go to engineering to begin to solve some of the problems at a more immediate nature. I think our streets efficiency study didn't have this street on until at least three more years, so, um, I'm, I'm for standing by the previous council's, uh, decision to, uh, to go along with that sufficiency study. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I just want to let everybody know why I changed my mind. Would you like a street that's half, one-third of it not done? When the snowplow comes down, they got to drop down, and one-third of it's got to be not done? This is one of the reasons why I decided to rescind my vote. And if they're doing it, they can do the street, and it'll be all nice and even. And the reason why it's a little more is because in that particular area, from Fourth Sixty-One to the end of, uh, the Baptist Church, which is the body line, the street widens up, and it all has all the little indentations where the street is wider. And that's the reason why our amount is a little more than what. And I know I'm going to hear from people that are going to say, "Well, why did you do this?" Well, would you like to go down the street and then have a hump, boom, and then go a little more, and then a boom to go up again? This is a main street that's, that feeds into Wooddale from eighty-three. And you, this is the one, one of the reasons why I, I decided to change my mind. And if I get in trouble with, in it, I'm in trouble. But that's the first time I've been in trouble. And I'm too old to worry about being in trouble. Okay? There you go.
Mayor Kay, do you see something else?
Uh, let me go to Alderman Winger, and I'll come back to you.
We need to keep in mind that, uh, in this case, Addison Township took the lead on organizing the engineering for this project. That's one more, um, task off our plates, so that being number one. And number two, uh, staying in sync is nearly impossible when you're trying to stay in sync with adjacent either townships, communities. So we're always going to have one, um, community doing a project either early or after ours. So, um, we need to adapt to that. So Addison Township was ready to move on this project, and we might have had ours maybe five years down the road, but it, it's logical to participate to get it done. Thank you.
Mr. Caskey?
Well, I just wanted you to know, Addison Township is also picking up the preliminary, uh, preliminary engineering and the field engineering on this project. So it's also saving you seventy thousand dollars worth of engineering costs.
Alderman Wesley?
That was my question, how much is the engineering cost on this project? And I find it very offensive that Alderman Wesley sits here and attacks you on, because you're a new commissioner here, as a highway commissioner, and...
Let's keep any personal comments out of this discussion.
That's fine. But I understand where you're coming from, but in the future, I'd like to, like the township to be connected with the city on...
Oh, no, we definitely will, you know, inform the village right away when they have any projects ahead of time.
Thank you.
Alderman Police?
To get on your case, you said you contacted the city in the spring. I need to know that going forward, when, whoever, whether it be the manager, the billing department, the engineering department, we get a lot of nonsense in our packets. If the, if the county or the township calls them, we should get one of those information-only sheets, "Hey, we've been contacted, this project may be coming down the pipe." I understand that if we do this road all at once, that is the best and optimal way to do it. I just don't like that we get told at the last minute, or, I really shouldn't say that, because you said you contacted, we've, the council found out at the last minute. And I also, I am getting hammered on these water issues, and we're just going to take eighty-seven thousand and zip them out, and then we might have to tell somebody else, "You know what, we're really out of money right now, we have to wait till next year." And that's why I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Caddala?
A couple of questions for you. The, um, um, the seventy-some thousand dollars that we're being presented with, that is only for the, uh, physical construction associated with the, uh, with the resurfacing. Do you might understand that you've already, you've already eaten that seventy thousand dollars in engineering, and that that's not part of this cost sharing?
No, we ate it.
Okay, and that seventy thousand was for the whole road end-to-end?
That's for your section.
So our section would have been seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
So you, what was your engineering for the whole road, if I may ask?
For the whole road project?
Yeah.
I would have to go back into my bills, I don't have that with me. I can give it to you, I can fax it to you tomorrow. I don't have the information with me, because this is all, uh, field engineering that was done recently. This is the most recent update I have.
Okay.
Usually based on MFT, uh, and I'm not sure what the percentage is.
So...
I could give you an estimate of that seventy thousand tomorrow.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, this is, this is only a resurfacing. I mean, you're not doing anything with the underbase, you're not doing anything with, with shoulders other than associated with resurfacing.
Exactly.
Seventy thousand seemed a little steep in the first place for engineering.
No, ain't engineering, that's the price for the whole resurfacing project.
I'm asking about engineering. What was the engineering dollar amount for our portion? Because I think members of this council are under the impression that you just saved us seventy grand in engineering, and I'm trying to make that clear.
No, no, Addison Township picked up the engineering costs on seventy thousand dollars, according to the MFT.
And the seventy thousand dollar engineering cost was for the whole street end-to-end?
I'm sorry, it's, it's not.
Okay.
The whole project, there's a preliminary engineering fee, and then there's a field engineering fee at the end.
Okay.
And I can get those estimates for you tomorrow. I just don't have them with me tonight. These are the actual costs.
What is the seventy thousand engineering fee that I heard discussed this evening?
No, we are picking up the percentage of that seventy thousand dollar engineering fee, where if you had to have it done...
What is the seventy thousand dollar engineering fee? It's a pretty simple question.
If you guys had the engineering done on that road?
Yes.
You would have to pay the preliminary, uh, preliminary and the field engineering on it?
Of course.
Of seventy thousand dollars. Addison Township is paying for that. So you're actually saving money also on the engineering.
The engineering fees associated with the seventy thousand dollars worth of reconstruction?
Yes.
Okay, I'm asking for the specific engineering dollar amount, which I believe you said you don't have with you this evening.
Exactly, I can get that for you.
And I'm, and I understand that, and now I'm asking for further clarification, that we're all on the same page. Somebody this evening, I don't remember what side of the table it came from, said that there was approximately seventy thousand dollars worth of engineering fees that we're not going to incur now. Or that, 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 we're not paying any of the engineering portion of this, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that our, we don't know what our engineering portion would have been, but it's not likely to be seventy thousand, because that's as much as the reconstruction.
You're correct.
That's, that's all I'm trying to get at here.
Yeah, no.
I mean, somebody, somebody talked about seventy thousand dollars of engineering.
No.
Okay. Okay, that's, when I heard that, that's why I put my hand up, and I needed the clarification. That's all I was getting at, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Shawkey?
Actually, a couple of things. First of all, um, somebody said about, talked about, uh, the, uh, the, the water, uh, engineering thing we had in town that I voted against, and I just wanted to mention that that's close to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in total now, and I think that there is, there's got to be a better way than to go out and piecemeal these studies on the water. And, uh, it's not that I don't want the study done, but I think there's a less expensive way to do it. Secondly, on, on the road item here, uh, we have a chance to have a street that evidently, in the past couple of years, has deteriorated quite a bit. And if we tried to do our part of it, and go to Addison and go to the Addison Township, there would be a lot of discussion about, well, who's going to pay the engineering fees, who's going to do that? I really don't care how much those engineering fees are, the point is that they have been picked up, so that all we're paying is for the construction of the road, of the part of the road that we own, to make Maple Meadows Road, or what we used to call, what did we call it? Third Avenue, uh, all the way from eighty-three, all the way back down to Addison Road, uh, a drivable and safe road over there. And I think that, uh, last week, it was mentioned that we do have that amount of money in our budget yet, in our road budget, because of money we've saved in other projects. So that's why I'm voting yes on this, to get it done. Thank you.
Alderman Winger?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with Alderman Shawkey, and well put, in terms of, in reality, whether the engineering cost is a thousand dollars, or seventy thousand, or thirty-five thousand. What's important here is that another taxing body is taking the lead on that, and that we're not paying the engineering fees. So it, it, it's definitely a value there, that our staff isn't, uh, has one less project off of their hands. And, um, secondly, in terms of the phone call, when it was made, what have you, I believe that everyone acted appropriate there. Addison Township said, "We're going to put this street in the budget." Um, the township calls Wooddale and says, "This is coming, I'll let you know when the real, real amount is there." And Mr. Graff has a plan that we've all agreed on, so why should he come running if we have a plan in place? And then, once the real numbers come, and for sure, if it's going to happen, then once he really knew, he'll let us know. I, I don't see a problem with any of it. Thank you.
Alderman Police?
On the problem, uh, let's just say, all the roads that we did this year didn't come under budget, they came at budget or ten percent over, we wouldn't have this extra money. At least we could have put it in on the case, on the chance that the township does the road. That's what I'm saying. But while you guys are out there, last night I was here for a stormwater meeting, I don't know, you guys going to repair the culverts? Because I'm hearing there's a lot of flooding over there along Oak Meadows Drive, is that going to be part of the, or that's not, something else, we have to contact somebody else, probably, right?
Yeah, we don't have any, uh, culverts on Oak Meadows Drive. All, all of our roads are right in front of the forest reserves.
Okay.
So it's all just open ditches.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I will personally apologize to the gentleman here if everyone thinks I got out of line here, I apologize on that part. Again, my whole concern is, I, I just, I, I just, for, for three hundred and some yards, I can't believe it's seventy thousand dollars for asphalt. I'm doing a whole entire street, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, water main, for, you know, about a little over a million dollars. I mean, I, I just, to, to take this on, I mean, the problem is, if you go, are you guys going to guarantee us, if, if, if a project comes, we do a real project, and like, if Deer Path come up, are you going to guarantee me the money's going to be there for you to take part in?
Yeah.
You are going to guarantee me?
I already talked, I already talked to Dave about it, and I said, "When you guys already do Deer Path, give me a call."
You're going to guarantee me the money on that?
Yep.
Alderman Police?
Uh, the Deer Path project, I think was, I heard was a few years away, but, again, I'm going to bring it up later. Another business, that we engineered two streets, and that's the street that comes up second for the following year, and we put it out for bid. So that might come up next year.
Alderman Lewitin?
Uh, Mr. Caskey, what I'm hearing from both you and from other aldermen is that, one, nobody is being bumped. Correct me if I'm wrong, no project on the books, this year, next year, the year after, no project is being bumped backwards because we're bringing Oak Meadows up to the front. True or false? Who can answer?
Dave.
I think the answer is that's correct.
Okay, so, the, first bedrock information is, no one's being bumped. Second information that I'm hearing is, due to frugality in the work that's been achieved in the road so far, there is money left over, and it will cover the cost of this project. True. Dave, true? Okay, thank you, Dave. Three, I said, when this meeting started, that I am for frugality, and that is, uh, not spending beyond your, your means. And what I'm seeing is that we have an opportunity to fuse our efforts with the county and come up with a lower-cost project than the project would be if the city did it alone. So therefore, it's in conformity with the philosophy I expressed about the signs. We're using the money wisely. And fourthly, what I have heard from before is that we're committed to removing transite pipes, and if a road project came up with pipes underneath, we would spend the extra money to go down and take the pipes out at the same time that we did the road. I know, um, city manager, uh, Dowthwaite did an inspection and said that, uh, that Alderman Caddala said that these are very new roads, they, I mean, new relative to the timeframe, the transite was no longer used, so this is not an issue in that case, so we wouldn't have to go digging down. Alderman Caddala, that's true? Uh, I heard that he got that information from you.
I offered a suggestion, he, uh, he asked me, when Mr. Manager Dowthwaite was asking, I don't know if he was picking our brains individually, or if he was lobbying me about this, but he brought it up to me on a telephone call, and, um, and, and said, um, well, I won't say everything he said, but one of the, one of his concerns was, what if, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to find transite pipes? And I asked him if he knew how long we had city water over there, and he said it was within the last twenty years. And I told him it was my understanding that transite pipe hasn't been used in the last twenty years, so it's not likely that we will. I said, "I'm not an engineer, I don't build roads, and I don't put, uh, water systems in, so I don't know that for sure." But, um, and I strongly suggested that if he thought that was good information to follow up on, that he'd go to, uh, somebody more qualified to make that determination, so... So, yeah, I told him it'd be my opinion that there probably wasn't, but I certainly don't want to sit here and let anybody think that I'm an expert on it.
Okay. And then, lastly, Mr. Caskey, I, you have a little foible, I don't mean to criticize you, but I'm very proud to be an alderman and not a trustee, I'm very proud to live in a city and not a village. And in Illinois, the distinction between village and city has nothing to do with size, it is the form of government that a city or a village has chosen, and Wooddale has chosen...